Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the Atsigo City Council meeting. Audra, can you have the record show that our attorney is online? Our city planner is present. Our city engineer is walking in right now. Councilmember Dunlap is present. Councilmember Gady is present. Councilmember Tanner is present, along with our assistant city administrator and administrator. And I actually believe Councilmember Lund is walking in right now. All right. Once Michelle gets her stuff here, I will ask you all to stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item this evening is the open forum. This is the portion of the meeting where residents can come to the podium, state their name and address, and limit comments to three minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak this evening? Yes.
Hi. Madam Mayor.
Can you please state your name and address?
Is this loud enough?
Yep.
Madam Mayor, council members, city staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Stuart Turnquist, 1102095th Street Northeast. When I finished building Patterson Station Artist Studios and Conference Center, which was renamed Riverwood Conference Center, I left. It had taken thirty years. And so I started building my new home and mulling around. Didn't want to start another project. After all, at that time, I was already an old man. But, yeah, I think that's going to happen. So I started putting together this idea about a farm, but a farm that would be agriculture and nature and art, rolling the three together. And that meant putting together different pieces of land that surrounded me. At that time, it was unfortunately a bad time for farmers because the dairies were going under and a lot of people were putting their land up. And Pearl had come over and asked if I'd be interested in the piece across the road. I said, yeah, because it had the big woods and the big woods has always been really an amazing piece of ground. And he had another buyer that was a developer from Maple Grove. And I did, and so got that piece. So that made five different parcels, which allowed me to get that all changed into being a new farm, USDA-recognized Clearwater Farm. And the pieces are significant because that is just a wonderland. If you go for the north, the boundary there is the Mississippi River. If you go heading south and you have to cross thirty-nine, which intercepts that piece that I had put together, you hit that hundred and five acres that I got from Jerry and Kenny Pearl. And that had that twenty-acre last piece of this magnificent big woods, which went from the Mississippi River all the way to the Southern Prairies. That was all over four thousand square miles, but it had been cut to the point that you hardly could find a piece that was pure anymore. And I had someone look and they took core samples and said the soil there is original, that it hadn't ever been tilled. There was nothing that turned over and it was a lot of native natural living there. So that then had enough to go forward with this idea. And the next thing was, and I had to steal an idea from Atsigo because wondering what to name it. And, and I remembered Atsigo had been a township, but what did they become? What are you all here for? Your city. They made it a city. I thought, well, how about if I change the farm's name to Interspecies City? And he'd say, okay, so now you've got a farm named Interspecies City. Where are you headed here? Like, who are the citizens? You walk that, and if you're starting at the river and you end up with the big woods, you've got, I think I counted, you know, right there, like, well over a hundred citizens. And then studying a little further, soon became so many citizens that, you know, with this idea of Interspecies City, the notion is to celebrate the shared experience of all life forms. So it's got a real simple sort of the whole idea. The putting together is where I'm in the midst of now. It's been twenty-five years, you know, since I started there with the Pearl Farm. And, and now, and now we've got it's a two-hour film that's being finished and, and over twenty I might as well call them fairy tale photo books, you know, where you're taking, you take a particular creature and you start to follow it and you start to write. You can find a book in that and you go from book to book. The piece that I'm at is now the challenge. Because I never expected it would be a challenge because I had started out with a twelve-acre piece from my uncle, who lived in that farm. And and one of the last pieces I bought was that eight-acre farm. And it was largely because your uncle and that farm was significant. And if I preserved it, when you're looking at a project, you then have quite a range of activities that have occurred historically on it. But the next, it had, at that time, a classification of future commercial. And so I have that map that shows that. And it says, and that was in twenty, twenty or ten or something like that, it shows it in great, it's commercial. And, and the next piece that came in was to make a a bed and breakfast, a farm store, and a new barn. The next people that appeared were the cul-de-sac or the roundabout people. And that had been a very dangerous, that corner there, nineteen thirty-nine, you know, back in the beginning, there was no stop signs whatsoever there. And people, you know, had a free-for-all, driving all over the place. And when they put the stop signs in that, that improved things, but not enough. My cousin had to leave the farmhouse because he didn't dare try to get into it anymore. And we all just sort of looked and gave up and tried to get in there. And that's why it's been kind of sealed off for all these years and why it's become kind of a magnet for all of the industrious teenagers that like to come in there and break in on the weekend and, you know, really have a great time, you know, in there. So here's the situation. To go forward, I need to have it once again returned to commercial. That's eight acres. And then I can go forward with the bed and breakfast because as this thing grows, there's some national interest in, in it. And, and you can see where a bed and breakfast would accommodate people that are coming that are interested about it. Treating the farm is also a stage set. And you're using that because everything that's coming out of it, film, a clear book or whatever, creatively, creatively, is, is going to be going to be made there. So you're going to see that suddenly you're into an area where is this, is this forbidden? And so the idea of it being commercial is pretty cool, is pretty essential. And the idea that when the roundabout people came in, I had seen the very beginning of the roundabout. And, and that's because I went, when they were when they, what is, they're laying it out anyway. And it was around, it was four stubs, like all of those. And the, and the fourth stub ran north. And it then allowed a branch off. If you went to the left, you got into the treatment center. If you went to the right, you got into the old farmhouse. The new one shows a stub that, that doesn't, it's like a crooked tree. It hits, it hits that and then it bends off to catch what is now the entrance to the treatment center. That meant that I could not get onto that roundabout. And at first they said, well, you're going to get in there. You know, we have to legally do is give you how to get in and you can go into that entrance that you have, the drive that goes back to your house. And that was quite a ways away. And that, and that made no sense. And I said that I wouldn't sign it. And they said, we'll take it by eminent domain. So that's kind of where it's lays here. I don't know where they're going to find, finally put it up. But they've, they've now come a little bit saying the original driveway in can be used to that farmhouse. But that stops short of being in the roundabout and for that reason, if you get out, go out, you're fine and you go east, west, north or south. And, but if you try to get back, you've got to go get into the eastbound or the westbound County Road Thirty-Nine, which means that you've got to figure out by after seeing the place, how do you get there? Who's going to know that they're going to have to go three miles that way to the next roundabout and come back to get in? So that's the short of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. Let me turn it over to the engineer. Rod, do you have, it's obviously a county project. Do you have any information?
Correct. Yeah, it's a county project that they're getting better late money for, or state aid money to fix it up into a roundabout for, for safety reasons. It's actually safety money called HZIP, Highway Safety Improvement Plan.
I would agree with his comments, though. If he, if you, if this is going to turn into a bed and breakfast and driving back three miles to get into it, are they looking at that? Could there, if, as Mr. Turnquist said, originally there was the north piece to it?
Yeah, if you've looked at it, there are elevation challenges going towards the north. Mr. Turnquist's property is, is higher and that house is fairly close to that. But I think they've reviewed it to see if they could put in a, what would, you know, be a city street with maybe turnaround in there that would provide access to both. But that requires, you know, quite a bit of property and potentially it gets pretty close to Mr. Turnquist's house that he has there. And again, the elevation challenges that they're looking at. The access point that he has right now to the house, one of them's about three hundred and seventy feet from the roundabout. But that one actually goes to the, to the back of the property. The one that goes to the house is much closer. I think that's probably within, let me see what it says here, about a hundred and fifty feet. So that would be in the gore pattern of the roundabout and make it extremely difficult to put a left-hand turn in there while cars are still working their way around the roundabout and pulling out from it. And then all of a sudden, a car might be in front of you taking a left, waiting for cars that are passing through going westbound.
So are you saying the one, if I'm looking at the map, the one on the east would be this right where your cursor is, that's out of where the roundabout piece would start?
Beyond the gore pattern and technically could use a left-hand turn. We'd have to work with the county to see if that's allowed. The other one that's much closer and has quite an elevation difference going up into it, that is, would be too close.
Too close, okay. Have they talked to you about that east driveway access? Would that work for what you're?
No, not at all.
Okay.
That would make it even harder to figure out.
It would give you full access, though, from east and west.
Excuse me? I'm not sure about that.
Rod, you said it would be out of the turn.
I'd have to talk to the county, but I believe it'd be on the turn. They would have to connect those two driveways in order for him to access back towards that house. And I think he's
Are you talking about the east, the east driveway, trying to get me into that one?
Correct. And connect it back to your house where you're looking at, do it in the bed and breakfast. Along the side of the road is a driveway.
I don't see how that, that would work.
Are you able to see the screen at all?
Pardon?
Are you able to see this big screens on either side of you out in the audience?
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing.
Oh.
I haven't heard anything that you said.
Oh, okay.
Dan, can you talk?
Yeah. So on the screen, we've got showing what the county is suggesting in the red line. So they're basically saying, what the county is saying is you could do this east access and then back to the house across. Versus
So if you're coming from Monticello or you're coming from Albertville, you're taking a right. And now you've got to try to get across all the incoming traffic, which is what I now try to do. And you can't because they get really pissed. They think you're their lane because it's the lane that's going to turn left to go onto nineteen. And so it, right now, it's a fool's paradise is what it is. Yes. Trying to get into that middle lane, if you get in it and they're coming down and there's a long line, which there usually is, one's first to see you then can quickly jump to the, to the right, but they're very close to you. One just behind them don't even see you until they're right on you. So that's what I'm saying. You've got to go out there and do it. Go out there and come from Albertville, try to move into that driver. Or come from Monticello, try to get into that driver.
Mayor?
Yes.
I, I think with the roundabout, you'll see a lot different traffic pattern and you won't see the stacking up of vehicles that Mr. Turnquist is talking about. And the people, there'd be better gaps created even during the peak times. And I'm sure the county, you know, they might have even a, one of those models that they have that shows the vehicles moving through there during peak periods. But they tend to keep the vehicles moving even during peak times. And, yeah, currently with the three-way stop, traffic does back up. But that's the whole point to putting in, in the roundabout is to keep the traffic moving.
Stuart, were you able to hear what Ron said?
Yeah, I am. And I know that it really isn't, I mean, those things are logical when heard, but illogical when you're getting in there and trying to do it because they're backed up. They want to go. They can't because you got to line up in both lanes. And you've got to get into that middle lane because if you don't, they'll hit you from behind. If you get into the middle lane, they'll hit you from the front. And supposedly a roundabout, and I like roundabouts and I'm for them, but that one isn't working because of the heavy traffic that is coming down thirty-nine, heading then to either Monticello or Albertville. So you really don't, you don't have a solution there, you know. Maybe it's different when you get way, a mile away or so, whatever. But that is not a solution at all. It's, that's a nightmare. And it's going to get worse.
Mayor, we can bring up the comments that Mr. Turnquist has and look at maybe a left-hand turn lane towards the end of the gore for the cars that are wanting to turn left have a, have a safety location to make that turn and wait for a gap so they're not worrying about cars behind them. But then that also would require Mr. Turnquist to, to agree to connect the two driveways and make it more accessible to get to his property that he wants, the house that he wants to turn into a bed and breakfast. I mean, so, I mean, we can, we can do our part as a city and talk to the county, but we need the property owner to work with us and we also will need the county to work with us. This is the county's jurisdiction, so we can only do so much on the city side, but we can help facilitate it.
I think, I mean, I agree with Mr. Turnquist that we want his business to be as successful as it can be and for people that go there to be able to safely access it. My one question is, is I get the north side and we're connecting the treatment facility. Are they looking at the east side of the property as being commercial? Or were they just looking at that as a ag property right now?
Mayor, so what Mr. Turnquist wants to do with the property doesn't require commercial zoning, bed and breakfast, farm store, that's all allowed in the agricultural district. So we've explained this to the county staff that what he wants to do is allowed on the property. And, you know, we've tried to encourage finding a way to make this access to the north, if at all possible. The response thus far is, but no, it's not because of the topography and some of the other issues in that area. So, you know, again, we can continue those discussions. Ultimately, it is county jurisdiction.
But, but I would hate for them to cut off one parcel that they're not allowing access and when you're coming from the east.
Correct. Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Kind of on that same point, wouldn't that driveway to the east and the next property kind of be running into the same thing? I guess what I was, what I was wondering, I don't know how it works at the county level. Are they more apt to to change their plan or update plans based on if it's ag or commercial? Like, that's kind of where you were going, right?
Yeah, that's why I was asking, does it change?
And, and that it's a business. I mean, even though it's not commercial, but it'll still be a profiting business or
The mayor, it's not a land use issue, it's a design issue for the transportation system.
Right.
And I was, yeah, I was just wondering whether if that property was guided commercial, we'd be in the same position.
Okay.
Mayor, they, they provided a continuous left for traffic to be allowed to pull in there safely and then wait for gaps to turn in. So those next driveways, I mean, that, that road is going to continue as a three-way road for the near future. Probably foreseeable future until they continue what they've done four-lane to Odine. And then they're continuing it out to Nashua, but we're still a long ways from getting to Lebo.
So that, so it would stay with a center turn in the center and then just two lanes? So we're not going into a double like we are down on thirty-nine and forty-two or page. Okay. So there is the possibility, as you said, to see the spacing. Right now, we don't see it because it stacks because of the stop sign.
Correct.
And Mayor, what the engineer and I were drawing out was basically maybe there's a way to extend the island coming off the east side of the roundabout to create a left turn lane for this property because the access is so close and because of the commercial potential that's being discussed. So that would give, you know, the ability to come out, pull into a dedicated space to wait to turn.
Sure. Do you have Mr. Turnquist's information?
Yes.
Rod, do you also, I, I mean, I, I think his points are very, very valid. Obviously, this is the county's project. But you are resident of Atsigo, so we do see the issue here and we, we agree with you. So we're, I mean, I guess I would say I'm speaking for myself, but I think staff has heard your comments. They should reach out to you and follow up with the county on how we can make this more accessible.
We have had several conversations, both with Mr. Turnquist as staff and then staff to county staff regarding this matter. So it's been a work in progress.
Okay.
Any other comments from council? Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we are still under open forum. Does anyone else have anything? All right, we'll move on to item two to consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, right.
I'd like to, on the consent agenda, bring down three dot three and three dot five. We can make those six dot one and six dot two.
Does anyone have anything?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, right.
With that, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, sir, second. Second. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Michelle. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to the consent agenda, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, right.
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Sir, second. Second. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Michelle. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item four point one, the Atsigo I ninety-four West Industrial Park, fifth edition. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. Particle Control Incorporated, based in Albertville, is looking at establishing a new division as part of their operations. And they identified a site in Atsigo to locate this, which we're very pleased to have them select the city. So the applications that have come forward include a preliminary and final plan to combine two existing lots within the Atsigo I ninety-four West Industrial Park into one lot and one outlot. Site and building plan review for phase one of the structure, which is thirty-eight thousand four hundred square feet. The plans also show a future phase warehouse of eighty-seven thousand five hundred square feet. And together with the plat, there's also the need to vacate existing drainage and utility easements. The property is located, again, within the Atsigo I ninety-four West Industrial Park, located at Candler Avenue and Seventieth Street. It's guided for industrial land uses by the twenty twenty-three Conference of Plan and zoned I two general industrial district. There are existing industrial uses on all sides of the property and also some of currently vacant lots that are expected to develop with industrials in the future. So this is an appropriate land use at this location. The preliminary plat, again, combines two existing lots into one to create a seven-and-a-half acre lot for the proposed business and then wet, an outlot encompassing the wetlands and stormwater basins. Easements would be vacated within the existing lots and reestablished in accordance with the subdivision ordinance. As these are two existing lots, there's no need for park dedication because there's no additional impact to the city system. With the plating of the property and additional public improvements that go in with the site and building plans, there is a need for a development contract. City staff has drafted that but not reviewed it. We will do so and then forward it to the developer that would come to the council for action likely at your next council meeting as a consent agenda item. The site plan shows both the phase one building and phase two, meeting all the requirements for setbacks at the perimeter of the lot, off-street parking, depending whether you're looking at the architectural site plan or the civil site plan, shows that the adequate, there is adequate parking on site and the ability to provide it, so no concerns there. Landscaping is shown fairly minimal based on the operation that Particle Control has. It's sensitive to plants and contamination issues. So again, it's fairly minimal with plants uh, and contamination issues. So again, it's fairly minimal with evergreen trees along the east side. Uh, we also discussed at the planning commission meeting, the irrigation system that's required. Uh, the developer would prefer to use more natural landscaping that can reduce water usage, which uh, can be accommodated subject to staff approval. Uh, they also were going to look at relocating the waste storage container again to um, probably screen that with natural plantings versus a fence enclosure, which again can be made subject to staff review. Exterior lighting would be reviewed at time of building permit. Uh, and they have provided plans for connection to utilities, which were reviewed by the city engineer. Also stormwater management plans for the site uh, to address stormwater runoff with the additional impervious surface. Uh, the building uses precast tip-up concrete panels, which meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. It's a one-story structure, thirty-six feet in height. Uh, does comply with the height limits of the zoning ordinance uh, for that zoning district and then it shows one sign on one elevation. Again, that can be installed with a signed permit reviewed by city staff. Again, uh, very pleased to have particle control looking at Atsigo uh, for their expansion of their business. Uh, is consistent with the policies of the comprehensive plan. Uh, the use complies with all the requirements of the zoning ordinance subdivision ordinance. Planning commissioner reviewed the site and building plans in the plat at their meeting on August eighteenth. Uh, they conducted a public hearing as required by statute. Uh, there were no public comments and that hearing was closed. After their discussion on landscaping and some other related items, they did vote six to zero to recommend approval. Uh, that approval would be subject to fourteen conditions presented in the findings of fact and decision near back of this evening.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to comment? Staff did a good job then. All right. Right, we'll bring it up to council. Questions for staff or for the applicants? Corey.
Madam Mayor, um, I just have a couple of questions. Uh, just some general stuff. Uh, about how many employees do you guys think might come to Atsigo? Sorry, I got you up there.
Um, it'll take some time, but it could be up to forty probably or a little, little more, maybe fifty at that location.
Okay.
So phase one would include what you currently have for employees? Would you be growing what you have currently?
We'll have to immediately, immediately hire. It'll take some time to, you know, develop the processing lines, but um, we'll grow as fast as we are able to.
Now, are you gonna be relocating or are you keeping both facilities?
Keeping both.
Okay, cool. Right.
Um, the other question I had was, uh, can you expect a lot of truck traffic or along that road?
Um, probably. It'll, it'll slowly ramp up over the years. Um, probably, you know, starting out, but, but within a year, probably doing eight trucks a day.
Okay. Thank you for looking at Atsigo. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. Glad to be here.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor, I just had a quick one. I just thought of it, Dan. I'm sorry, but the um, sign permit that may potentially be required, what would be allowed under the current without a sign per, permit?
Mayor, all signs require a permit.
Okay.
So they're allowed two hundred square feet of wall signs or a freestanding sign up to two hundred square feet and fifty feet in height.
And this is within that they would still just need the permit?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha.
Any other questions? And if no one else has any questions, a motion would be in order.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, right.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine, vacating existing drainage and utility easements. Approve of preliminary plat and final plat for Atsigo I ninety-four West Industrial Park Fifth Edition and site and building plans for lot one, block one. Atsigo I ninety-four West Industrial Park Fifth Edition, subject to conditions as stated on the finding of fact and decision as presented. Second.
Motion by Corey, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Welcome to Atsigo.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Welcome. All right. Moving on to item five. Item five point one is consider approval of purchase of the fleet vehicle.
Pete Proch, do you mind presenting? Sorry, I wasn't paying attention. I was doing something else. Uh, we are on item five point one for the SUV.
SUV, okay. So um, state bid for emergency services vehicles opens once per year. Uh, first step is you have to request an allocation. Uh, if you're lucky enough to receive an allocation, then we have to go ahead and and do the actual spec for the vehicle and order it. Um, we did ask for an allocation uh, back in, yeah, uh, probably June. We asked for it to be included. We did receive an allocation. Um, you may or may not know that emergency services vehicles are very uh, hard to get right now. Um, a lot of the departments are multiple years behind on vehicle replacement. Uh, but we were able to get an allocation for a Tahoe. If you remember bef, actually before I was hired, when I came here, uh, you purchased F two fifty there for me to drive. Uh, the reason that vehicle was purchased is there were no SUVs available on state contract that year. So we purchased the F two fifty with the intent to convert that to a brush truck once the department is up and and operating. So the allocation now is open for the SUVs. Uh, we were able to do that. So by placing the order now, we'll receive the SUV sometime in the first half of next year. And that will give us time to have an outfit and ready for operation once the department is up and running. So what we're asking for approval today is to actually place the order for the vehicle. Uh, then we'll be coming back at a later date to uh, get approval to do the upfitting. It is part of our startup uh, budget that we had planned for from very beginning. Any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Corey.
Pete, I just had one. Are, do we, do we still have the, the intent with the F two fifty that? What, what we had planned to do with it?
It will, it will become a brush truck once the department is starting to be staffed up.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Corey.
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of two thousand twenty-six Chevrolet Tahoe four-by-four special service vehicle from North Country GM in the amount of fifty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents.
Second. Motion by Corey, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item. We'll do six point one, then we'll do updates if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay, item six point one was the previous three point three. Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just wanted to bring this sound for a separate vote. I oppose this action because our city is able to receive excellent service from our existing contract providers at a price point that is cost efficient for the taxpayer. If approved, uh, this will increase the total spend on our fire department to six million ninety thousand four hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents, which is four point four times the cost of the contracts.
Madam Mayor, yes, I'd like to uh, do a motion for, to approve the pay application number eight in the amount of one million, three hundred twenty-four thousand, six hundred eighty-two dollars and forty-six cents for the work completed on the fire emergency services facilities project.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Corey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Item six point two was a previous three point five. Ryan.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I guess my issue with this item is that I don't really have an issue with the item itself. It's more about the underlying ordinance. I think uh, this is the second time in three years that we've had to modify this ordinance. In order to make it easier for city-sponsored events to utilize food trucks. And really, I think our goal should be to make it easier for residents to have that same level of access. A few weeks ago, we had the Night to Unite event. And there were lots of neighborhoods that had food trucks in them. And there were even some that were, there were some photos that were taken by city staff that showed food trucks out and about at um, in residential neighborhoods. And every one of those food trucks would be in violation of our ordinance. Uh, but I doubt that there's a council member here who would be willing to stand up and say they should have been fined. Or we should have had the sheriff's office tow those vehicles. So to me, we have an ordinance that I believe we would all be in agreement that it should not be enforced. If that's the case, then I think it should be repealed. So that's why I would oppose this amendment to the ordinance.
I will turn this over to Adra and to Dan because there was a lot of discussion about this. Um, it sounds like we I'll let Adra speak. It sounded like we were going through one channel to get one set of license and another group to do the other license. But if you could comment on that.
Sure, Mayor, I could add some comment and I'm sure Dan can add into. But we were finding parks were doing an approval that was maybe slightly different than what staff were doing and it was confusing who needed a license and who did not need a license. Was it a pride event? Was it sold to the public? So staff looked at it and in the interest of everybody, we're looking at all the licenses with this proposed amendment so that everybody's treated the same way. And that we're verifying that they're in good standing, have insurance. Um, they're up to date on all their licenses with the state. And then they pay one fee for the year. And if they go to different sites, depending on if it's a park event or a private event, they may need to just let us know where they're gonna be. There's no additional cost for that. So it was mainly to streamline it because it was confusing on who needed a license and who didn't. Dan, do you have anything to add?
Mayor, that's correct. And the one additional item that we did add was that with the license, there'd be a fire inspection. Uh, one community work and had one of these explode while parked in somebody's driveway. So um, you know, there's the, that public health safety issue involved. Uh, where it started was we had a request for National Night Out where the truck was going to be parked on a public street adjacent to a park. Uh, so it fell into a gray area of whether it was a public event, private event, parked on a street, you know, how, how should it be addressed? So staff was refining what is in the ordinance to treat all food trucks the same, whether it's a city event, private event, or open to and accessible to the public on a public street. And to maintain the regulations as they were. Um, it's a philosophical question and policy question for the council uh, as to the extent to which you feel these need to be regulated.
Food trucks are here to stay, would be my point. Everyone has them. To Ryan's point, there's many block parties that had them. There's many people that have graduation parties that have food trucks at them. So are you saying, Ryan, you don't want any license for these food trucks or I guess?
Yeah, I mean, so the, the food trucks that we often see now would not be in compliance with our current ordinance. So my argument would be we should be getting rid of the ordinance. Uh, food trucks are still regulated. I mean, they still have to go through Department of Health. They still have to pa, pass all those types of inspections. So I don't see the need to add on the extra layer of bureaucracy if most of them are not even complying today anyway.
Do we see some, I, this would be a question for staff. Do we, are we aware that some are not to your point, Ryan, they may have already have a license that they were at these events?
So you cannot, in the city of Atsigo, and I've talked to the food truck, the Minnesota uh, Food Truck Association about this. In Atsigo, you cannot operate a food truck on a city street for a public event unless it's on Parsons between eighty-fifth and eighty-seventh, or if it's in the B three district.
And Mayor, that's been changed to remove that provision.
With this?
Yes.
I did not see that in there.
Here, may I add, also, um, they'll get some advertising because we'll have a list on the city website of approved mobile food trucks. So hopefully that encourages them to comply so that they're getting more business because they're being advertised.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Uh, maybe well, he's looking, uh, maybe a question for Dave. That's one way or the other, if we license them or not, or have permits or not, leave the city liable more than one way or the other?
Well, Mayor, I, I guess I would say a lot of city licensing process on this is just to verify that the food trucks are properly licensed by the state and haven't had any violations, you know, so it's kind of a double check to make sure that you don't have a food truck operating in your community that's had problems or violations. So they are regulated by the state to some extent, but cities often like to double check that and make sure they're not getting food trucks in their communities that may have problems.
Mayor.
Yes.
So um, on page four of the draft ordinance, section four dash twelve dash five, section B, public rights of way in city properties. Um, this section was revised to allow mobile food units to park on public streets in accordance with specific or specific criteria. All subject to staff review. So we did, the previous ordinance council member done that is correct that it did have a limitation only on Parsons Avenue between eighty-fifth and eighty-seventh street within the B three district. That was removed to recognize.
Open it up to the whole city.
Yep.
Mayor, I, I guess I just had another reason to consider regulating food trucks is to define things like hours of operation and location, things of that nature. So you don't have food trucks operating in hours and locations that cause problems. So that's another reason to review it before the food truck goes into operation in your city.
This would be a question for staff. And Dan, you work in other communities, so maybe you're more have a little bit more knowledge on this one. It's my understanding most cities do require their own private license that these food trucks are coming into the city to get licensed to operate in those communities.
Mayor, some of the cities we work for do require them, some don't. The larger ones where there is more activity do.
Does anyone know where our neighboring cities, what they do?
Madam Mayor, I can, what I do know is the, when I asked for examples from the Minnesota Food Truck Association of sort of a cities that they would look to for good ordinances by their standards, um, they told me Maple Grove and Blaine. I don't know if that's helpful for anyone, but um, I looked at Maple Grove. Now, this is a while ago. They might have changed it in the last year or so, but for most food trucks, they did not require a license. And I can't recall Blaine, to be honest.
Just since some questions have been raised, is there a way for us to I mean, this, this doesn't go in effect until January, so we do have some time. Um, I guess I would like to see what those larger communities, what their ordinance looks like personally. I, I can agree with what Ryan's saying to the point that these trucks are being licensed, but to Dave's point, somebody could just buy a trailer, put a sign on it, not have anything through the Department of Food Safety as, or whatever your acronyms were, Ryan, and then they're setting up shop. So I do have a little concern with that too, that people will assume the city is licensing or not. And I will say on the festival side of things, those people that come to our events are never concerned. I mean, they know they usually have to check in with the city and have a food, you know, get a license through the city. So I've never heard someone complain that they had to do that step. And those are the businesses that are obviously coming in to do it. So I would, I would, I would think differently if there's, they're all saying, you know, Atsigo's ordinance is the worst ordinance ever, whenever, we're not gonna participate in it. But that's not been the issue that we've heard of so far. Unless you've heard something differently.
No, I would say for our city-sponsored events, I think I don't know that I've received any particular feedback on that. It's just the ordinance in general that I was thinking of. But I wasn't reading this ordinance as a completely revamped when I was looking at it. It's kind of a red line. So now I'm kind of quickly thinking through my thought process here.
Uh, Mayor, the council can certainly table this and we can review the Blaine and Maple Grove examples. Uh, check and see which of the surrounding communities also require licensing, uh, report back at a future meeting.
I just threw that out there. I just threw that out there if that helped Ryan to come to a decision. I obviously supported the mobile food license before. I do like that there were changes to this. Um, and, and again, at admin subcommittee, when me and Cory first heard about it, it was streamlining it between. The city clerk and the parking wreck department that this was going to be one. Everybody was going to be treated the same now. So there wasn't any cross questions with, if they came to the Prairie Festival, could they then go to? A, a different event that they were called to go to.
Yeah.
Uh, we did ask about. Um, if they. You know, let's say they set up at Ryan's house and had a food truck event, but then they're invited to Cory's house and they just said you would just call the city and you can update and you could. List all the events that you might go to and it's, there's no additional charges. It's just more or less that the city would know where these trucks might be. If they do get complaints.
Mayor, one of the reasons we took out that provision regarding Parsons Avenue. Was to streamline it because otherwise, well, if you can only park on a street here, what if you go to somebody's house and park along the street? You know, adjacent to the yard. So it was creating. An overlap that didn't work.
Sure.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
And I can, I can appreciate, uh, Councilmember Dunlap's questions. I think they're good questions to ask. Uh. The part I like about it is having. The permits or license it gives you. The ability to, for recourse, but. I would like a little more information. I think, I think it brings up just. To compare to our neighboring cities. But, yeah, the goal was to, to streamline it.
Other comments?
I, yeah, I just, I, I like the, the fact that we are streamlining it and not picking and choosing, but I do like having. The city knowledgeable of where these. Food trucks are. I just think for safety purposes. Um. I've got a fire or whatever it may be, because they come in our neighborhood too. I mean. All the time. We have different events going on and they're parked on our city streets. And. I just think right away of public safety because again, if there were a fire, there's no way that a fire truck gets through there. With all the parking, whether the food truck and then the parking. So. For me, I, I like that we would know where these food trucks are.
That's a good point with the, the fire services and, and different things that would have to get through.
Yeah, there's no way that a fire truck could get through with. The food truck parked where it is. And then cars parked on the one side. But they don't always listen to that either. So, but I think as far as a city goes, it makes me feel good. As a resident. Um, just to know that. You know, we're aware and if anything were to happen. Um. We're just aware of it.
Um, kind of resounding what everyone else is saying, kind of taking a look at what other cities are doing. The larger ones, um, you know, focusing on Blaine and Maple Grove since they have some stellar reviews from. On, on the state level or whoever. Had made that comment, I guess Ryan, whoever that was, but we would be good to see what they're doing and, um, see, see how we can apply. Some of those strategies here if we haven't already got those captured. So I am surprised that. You know, and Ryan, you said it was a year ago, but I am surprised that Maple Grove wouldn't have licensing for their food trucks.
For most of them, yeah.
That actually surprises me. So. But. Maybe the, as you said, that maybe they've changed it in the last year.
Very possible.
So. Right. What is everyone feeling? Do we? Move ahead? Do we? Get some clarification on a few of the points that you've brought up this evening?
Madam Mayor. Yeah, I think maybe just clarification and table it for just to get some more information. Uh. I think one of the things that, that too, it was causing a lot of overhead, right, Adra? I mean, that's why we streamlined it too. With.
It was just more confusing if a license was required or not required, depending on where it was located. And just at a quick glance, Albertville Rogers and, I'm sorry, Albertville. Saint Michael and Elk River all require licenses. I just looked over and chatting.
Okay.
Okay.
If that helps you.
Well, that might have answered a lot of our questions.
Well, and I, I mean, I'm not against it. I think more information. I think it would be good just to see what, what. How are people maybe managing the whole fire, um. Route or challenge? I mean, i- if there, if it's over a certain size, maybe they can't park on certain roads. There might be some limitations. We might need to step forth on that, but I don't want to create more work either. So. Uh, I'm not sure what the best approach is, and maybe that's comments from. More people.
Yeah. We'll look to you on that.
Mayor. Uh, we like work, so that's good.
If you want the information, we can provide. What a happy guy.
I mean, Sergeant Altman's walking up. Oh. Now, now he's going to say something and we're going to just move this forward, right? What do you got for us? Food trucks.
So one of the comments was made about like the sheriff's office having to remove something. The state licensure is more of a civil penalty. So if someone were to call up and say, hey, this food truck doesn't have a license. That would likely be more on health, human services and the licensure from the state. We would likely have almost no recourse or leverage to say. You need to move this because you don't have a state license if there isn't something local. If there's something to the point, if they don't have their license, um, and there's a city ordinance saying you have to have a license of some capacity to operate this. Then we would have the ability to say, hey, we have a city ordinance, the sheriff's office can take action in whatever capacity that is. If it's just the state that has a license, there's nothing from the city of Atsigo.
And that makes me a little nervous.
I don't think we would be able to go, okay, we'll write down this. Write down your information and take some photos and we'll send it to the state. And they'll address it in the next month.
So. By us. Approving this, it actually gives us the ability and you the ability to enforce something. There's no recourse if I start. Dragging my trailer around and selling sloppy joes out of it. And I don't have a state license.
Right, I'm, we're really bringing it down to the basics on how that would work. But like I said, if, if. I'm trying to think of the example of the, the stock camp sloppy joe trailer.
Right.
Um, makes a.
Make really good ones.
Parks on the side of whatever, of whatever capacity. I, I don't know how I could tell you to, you have to move it because of the food service versus, you know, I'd have to get creative with. Parking, emergency routes. I'd have to get creative to force somebody out of that. Otherwise. The sheriff's office really isn't in a position. And this would go back to. Other statutes that we've had in the last 10 years as far as food service where. Local law enforcement doesn't really have a lot of, uh, leverage, I guess, when it comes to that sort of stuff. It had a lot of that as a observe and report. Forward to the state. And like I said, I. Not to rip on the state, but I'm going to guess that's something that's not going to be handled expeditions.
Then I guess I will say with those comments, I would support this and I don't need more information. I would. Want to be able to, if there is a situation, allow. Our Wright County deputies to handle it appropriately. And given that information, they would not be able to do that if we don't have something in place.
Sure. And I guess, uh, and making a comment on the philosophical side of things, obviously, like we genuinely do, like as silly as it sounds, we do get phone calls on like the lemonade stands. Like, and so clearly we, on one of the spectrum, we do get calls on like little, little kids having lemonade stands or to the. You know, the next step up is a table that has Girl Scout cookies on the corner. We have people that call in on stuff like that. Obviously, we're going to use discretion when it comes to, you know, that's again.
Sure.
One way. So we're going to use discretion as we go through that.
Yeah.
To, to Ryan's point on the, you know, having government. Step in on a neighborhood block party. I certainly don't. We don't like to be in the business of that.
Sure.
But I think if it's now easy for them to understand it, and again, I, I was speaking for all the vendors that we have at the, the festival, we give them the option to. Once you've been here, come, come back to Atsigo, set up shop wherever you can. You know, if you're paying once for the license, it's probably more beneficial for you to. Come often. So. And that hasn't been a concern, but. Um, thank you for the information.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Really directed my thinking on it also. So. I would support moving forward tonight, but again, I would open it up to the rest of you if you're.
You're making a motion.
I'm open to any comments you might have if you're.
I, I agree with you. I mean, I, that really helped. Helped me.
Anyone else?
I agree too. I mean. I said it before and that just confirmed.
Ryan?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I'll just conclude with the, I. I appreciate the discussion. I think. I think there's some good. Pros and cons. I think ultimately I still kind of land on the side of, I don't. Really think we need this level of regulation, but. I will say this is a step in the right direction. I do think that the licensing process should be simplified. I like that we are actually opening up to the entire city. So I think my. My disagreement at this point is just the philosophical one, so.
With that said, we need a motion.
I'll make the motion, motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash. Six or thirty.
Six.
Six, thank you. Amending the city code regulating mobile food units and approved publication, uh, is some reform.
Second. Motion by Tina, seconded by Michelle. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Really good discussion, everyone.
Yeah.
Also. Okay, we are still on city council reports and updates. We'll first go through commissions. Uh, first is heritage preservation. Corey.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the commission met on August twelfth and continued working on festival planning.
Uh, parking wreck, Michelle?
We did not meet last week.
As I stormed into another meeting, wait a minute. This is the right?
Yes.
Next is planning commission, Ryan.
Uh, Madam Mayor, the planning commission met, uh, last week and discussed, uh, protocol control, which we just approved earlier tonight. I believe the next. Planning commission meeting is canceled, so the next one scheduled is for September fifteenth.
Mayor, that's correct.
All right.
Okay. And next is public safety.
And yes, we met last week, um, pretty much spoke about, uh, the Prairie Festival, which is again, September thirteenth. Uh, we're going to have a table and trucks by each other and, uh, get some, a couple of things ordered for the kiddos. So. All in all, it'll be great.
Perfect. All right. Any other council reports or updates?
Uh, Madam Mayor, just something, uh, really quick. The, uh, public works subcommittee has been working on. The RFQ, uh, process for the cell central, uh, water treatment plant.
Yeah.
And it's, um. We're on a tight timeline for that. Um, so, uh, I just wanted to check with the rest of the council and make sure that the council was okay with. Um, some members of the public works subcommittee handling the RFQ scoring process for those, um. Candidates, I guess you could say. So we had, we've. Our engineering team has put together, uh, a pretty lengthy RFQ that they have to respond to. We will go through and score those, interviewing those, um, and the plan is to come up with. Between two and three. Um, eventual candidates. If we needed the whole council to do that, we wouldn't be able to hit the deadline by the end of the year. So. Um, I was hoping that, uh. There would be no objection to us handling that.
It's. That is.
Is that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it's, it was, um, basically the timeline in order for us to meet all the dates really comes down to crunch time right now.
Okay.
Uh, so, um, if you guys are comfortable with Ryan and I and, um, other people that would. From, from staff making up that committee, if you're comfortable with that. Want to be a part of anything or privy to anything, please let us know.
No, I guess just updates along the way, if you're able to.
Yep.
Share that information with us, but. Um, thank you for doing that to make sure we're meeting our deadline. I'm fine with that.
You okay with that, Adam?
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, Ryan and I will be potentially meeting. Um, in between. Our, our monthly meetings that are scheduled, so.
Just to make these.
Yep.
Just to make these.
Okay.
Well, thank you for doing that extra. Um, work, make sure that we get that done.
Yep.
Anyone else have anything? Okay. Moving on to staff reports and updates. Sabrina.
Thank you. Mayor, uh, I'm probably going to steal this from Adam. Uh, we are closed Monday for Labor Day.
Well done, Sabrina.
We'll expect you here. Adam.
Mayor, council, uh, reminder, there's a five thirty budget meeting scheduled for September eighth. And Sabrina and I have been meeting with, uh, numerous people, uh, looking to fill the interim. Uh, position for emergency services. So we hope to have an update. Uh, or an action item to you on September eighth.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Adra.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no updates.
Right. Dave.
Updates. Thanks, Mayor.
Dan?
Mayor, after Assistant Minister Hillis' update, I have no idea.
You want a one upper?
On top of that.
Okay, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a, a few updates on some projects. Uh, the overlay project is complete. Uh, MacGyver Avenue and the Marlowe Avenue Roundabout, that's planned to start. Uh, day after Labor Day, September second. So County Road and then County Road one thirty seven in MacGyver. We had a pre-con on that, uh, just a, a week or so ago. Um, that will start September ninth. Uh, but the detour signs. Will be set up for the Marlowe. And MacGyver, but you will be able to still travel on one thirty seven. Up until September ninth, and then they'll close off. One thirty seven through there also. Um. I don't know if there's any other questions on that.
I wonder. I have one. Um, can you? Have staff, your staff contact the bus departments for both. STMA and ISD seven twenty eight because those may impact those routes, especially given that it's within that first week of school.
Yeah, Barb usually does that, so we'll, uh, inform. Barb and she's got the contacts.
Okay. That would be great. I just. Know that they're feverishly getting out bus routes and some people don't have them yet. So where they may start with their pickups may be impacted the next week and. They can maybe implement that into their plan.
Okay.
I wonder, um, Madam Mayor, if we should have some sort of message go out, maybe. Facebook or whatever, the parents who maybe are driving their kids that way who are.
Mayor. We, we do have the. Uh, the sign wagons that. They'll be up a week before. The closure. So they, they may even be up right now.
Okay, okay. So we can get sign closures and then. If Heidi can do a big Facebook blast.
Mayor, we reached out to the county staff today asking where that was and we don't have it as of now. But it will be live on the website and social media once we do.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
The, the other item on there is that the only project that they're planning on working on this year is the roundabout at. One thirty seven at Marlowe. That's phase one and then they'll get that opened for the winter. And then it won't be till next year that they'll be working on the next segments, uh, phases of the project.
Okay, but that would be in the spring?
Correct.
Okay.
Uh, the trails, Eightieth Street, Cassaf forty two, those will be starting after Labor Day. Um, and then the Odean Avenue Water Main Project, that's to start the second or third week of September. So the trail will be closed for about a week, then reopen with gravel patches. And then shut down. Um, maybe three or four weeks later for a date to put the pavement back in and then reopen again.
Well, it, so right now it's closed on the corner of Seventy Fifth and Odean where the fire station is. There's that little section there.
Yep.
When they're. Repatching. For. Further down Odean, will they be doing that whole stretch then at one time or will that corner still stay? Gravel? And maybe you don't know that answer.
It might be.
That might be a Darryl question. Okay. Okay.
That was last of my updates anyway.
Sorry, I just, I'm like, well, if we're going to be in there patching, are we doing it all at one time?
It's very likely that that will stay closed through the winter.
That piece will, okay.
Until they're ready to start paving the, uh, approaches into the station.
Okay. All right, that makes sense.
They'll be doing some, um, pa- paving within the site, but where the trucks are coming in and out, they'll wait till they're pretty much done before they do that.
Okay. All right, well, it is, Darryl, actually, it's your turn. Sorry. Stay up here.
Okay.
All right, Darryl.
Uh, they should have finished in closing the perimeter of the building today. Uh, Councilman Gady stopped and, and got a little tour the other day. I encourage all of you to stop by. Um, I would just ask if you do stop there, um, go to their job trailer, make sure that they know you're outside so they give you a helmet and vest, so. And then stay out of the way if they're swinging panels and stuff. Those panels weigh, uh. A significant amount. We wouldn't want to squish one.
You will be flacked.
Um, that's all I have, other than to say thank you for the support of the last couple. Um, that's all I have, other than to say thank you for the support of the last couple of years. I really appreciate everybody's input. Even when we disagreed, I think the questions that were asked made the project better, so I appreciate it.
You can, Darryl, I have a few comments if you're okay. Um, I didn't know when I should do it, so it seems fitting right now. But, um, so it says, Darryl, from the day you joined the team, you were entrusted with the responsibility of laying the foundation for the Atsego Emergency Services Department. You approached this with an unwavering integrity, dignity, and grace. You became the point person for emergency management in area of urgent need, and you stepped up without hesitation. You established a thoughtful and strategic timeline to guide the creation of the Atsego Emergency Services and Fire Department with the goal of full operations by twenty twenty-seven. Under your leadership, we broke ground on our emergency services facility, which is now under construction and will stand as a lasting symbol of your vision and dedication. You also led the efforts to define specifications and secure the department's first four apparatuses. And you helped shape the staffing model, framework for personnel and operat- operational policies. These will all be essential elements that will ensure this department serves Atsego for years to come. While I'm deeply saddened that you won't be at the helm when the doors do open, your legacy is already rooted in Atsego's future. You have given us the roadmap and we will carry it forward. On behalf of the entire city of Atsego and those that will benefit from all your efforts, I thank you and continued prayers for you and your family as you navigate your next steps. You will be missed.
Thank you. Hopefully I'll be back when you have your open house.
We hope to have you here.
You'll be back. I'll come get you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thanks, Chief.
Sergeant Altman's. Is it not going up? Is it not? Maybe it's not plugged in.
That's fine.
Oh, you can crouch down.
Uh, this time I was actually invited up here, uh, so.
Hey, you weren't here last time.
I did.
Nope, you were in the back.
I was told, I was told I get one phone call per my turn. I now have to make sure I get up here, so, um, I made sure to check the trademarks, uh, Stock Camp Sloppy Joe.
You guys stop by, I'll make them. I'm actually making them tomorrow. You guys really should stop by.
Sweet.
Come for dinner. I just invited the whole city of Atsego.
Uh, this time of year, obviously, that we're going back to school, so a couple of things that we're trying to do with that. Oh, not only will I be, we're going to have kind of dedicated some more traffic enforcement for the various problems. Nothing else on my part, I try to get out there and just kind of observe whatever problems that we're going to run into, because inevitably, there's going to be, you know, there's always different routes inside the schools of different, uh, drop-off routes, and it always, there's some law of unintended consequences of something that happens out on the road, whether it's MacGyver, River Road, or whatever the case is. So, I'll be out there trying to, uh, watch and see if there's anything major that we need to improve on. Obviously, the school resource officers had a couple in-house training days just dedicated specifically to school stuff. Um, their last day of that was today, so they kind of go, start getting into their, their roles here, starting tomorrow. I know, kind of, I'm hijacking a little bit from, uh, the newsletter, uh, part of the sheriff's office's article, but the school bus arm violation things, we are enforcing pretty heavily. Um, initially, when I started back in oh-seven, we would typically treat school bus arm, you know, the stop arms that pop out, those violations, we kind of put the burden on the school bus driver to pursue what those charges would be down the line, and like, they would end up having to be the, kind of, the sole representative of how that charge went and going to the county attorney and having to go into court and testify on it. Fortunately, that philosophy has changed as well as having the statute basically reflect, um, if a vehicle passes an extended, uh, stop arm, that statute says that we can essentially charge the owner of the vehicle just there. If we have the license plate, we can simply charge on that. We typically do more due diligence than that. We will investigate it thoroughly. We watch all the videos, we go to the house, we speak with the owners. We go pretty, pretty heavily into these things, because we obviously don't want accidents and we want to make it clear that if that thing, if that stop arm is out, it's stopped. So, um, we do hundreds of those a year, and again, almost all the school buses in this area, St. Michael, Albertville, uh, the Elk River School Districts, especially here in Atsego, they have cameras all over them. And they typically have those reports to us, uh, within an hour with license plates, descriptions of people, if there are kids out and about. It's a gross misdemeanor level to pass a stop arm that is extended if there are kids outside of the bus. So, it is a misdemeanor if the kids are still on the bus, if the kids are outside of the bus in any capacity, it's a gross misdemeanor. It's technically an arrestable offense, so. We're taking it pretty seriously.
Do you anticipate? Because I know both schools have tried to change their patterns internally on how they're going to get parent drop off to go a little faster. Are there any changes that they're implementing this year that you're aware of or?
My understanding is whatever things are mainly in the parking lot, you know, where are they going to put the cones? Or, you know, drop off or the certain time, it's going to be kind of minor stuff, and it's just kind of trial and error. Because it's just, like anything else, yeah, we have this good plan in place in the SROs, uh, everybody at school administrations all, uh, think and plan it out, and then there's something that was unaccounted for when it actually goes into place and you go, oh crap, right? We didn't think about that. So, it just, that's how it goes with traffic, and that's how it's always been with any school in the county.
Sure.
Quite literally. So, every, uh, every single school I know has issues with drop off. You know, in Albertville, we've had issues with, you know, the lines, snakes all through your neighborhoods and everything like that, so.
Do we have the same SRO officers this year that we did? Okay, good.
Up, he's, he's been with, uh, Atsego now for five, six, seven years, I think now, just doing Atsego schools. And so, when then we have, we have two supervisors now too, that are both sergeants that just oversee school resource officers. And so, we'll have, uh, that supervisor goes and just goes in between different calls at the schools, make sure everything is handled correctly. So, pretty good system. We got enough school resource officers in the area between Atsego, St. Michael, Albertville, the Monticello. So, if there's major issues or whatever the case is, they need a hand, they just kind of flex up and down, and then that supervisor floats in between the different calls too.
Anyone have anything? Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Sergeant. We'll make sure the podium rises next time.
This podium.
Yeah, yeah. I guess, luck during, there you go. All right, if no one else has anything, then a motion to, turn would be in order.
Second.
Motion by Tina, seconded by Michelle. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The meeting has ended. Thank you all for attending.